Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation? Mr. Juárez, can you lead us?
Yes, please, our heads. Your father, as we get here today, we thank you for your blessings. You have bestowed upon us. If we start tonight's meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom as our elected officials make important decisions that will benefit our city. We place our words in your hands, as we always bring your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Face the flag or pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the policy for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Our staff committee members. First item, Mayor Commissioners, on the items we have on the presentation, we have a presentation recognizing the 2024 City of San Juan Parks and Recreation Texas Amateur Athletic Federation Athlete of the Year. Mr. Juárez?
Good afternoon. Mayor Garza, Mayor Portem Viegas, members of commission.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon. Today, this afternoon, I'm here to present to you tonight the 2024 San Juan Parks and Recreation Texas slash Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, which is TAF, the Male and Female Local Athletes of the Year. With me here today, I have also our San Juan Parks and Recreation Assistant Director and our TAF Region Two Director, Mr. Ramiro Moreno. And also with us today, we have our San Juan Parks and Recreation Assistant Number Two, Alex López, with us to help with the presentation. Just to short, you know, due to the fact that our participation numbers are doing very well in the last couple of years, we are, we have been recognized by TAF on the state level in regards to our participation numbers. Ramiro, being the director, one of the directors of Region Two for TAF, we made the decision back in the day to not only participate, our programs in TAF, not only for summer programs, but we do it yearly for our entire programs. The only program that we do not have a per se TAF certification is our program. I know Mr. Viegas is familiar with that. It's his own association. But all our programs are assigned to, under TAF. And again, our participation numbers do very well on the state level. And we are, we are, and have been recognized in the past, and we're looking forward to more recognition in the future. Now, moving on to the Male Athlete of the Year, or Male and Female Athlete of the Year. You know, this decision is never easy. You know, again, through our participation numbers and the amount of children, kids that are participating, it's not easy to nominate or to choose one male or one female. This year, we had some nominations that our staff decided to nominate. And due to the fact, you know, areas and consideration that we do look into is the participation as well, you know, and the amount of years have been enrolled in our programs. And of course, it's their character, it's their efforts and their attitudes as well that doesn't, you know, go unseen. But with us here today, we have two outstanding individuals that were nominated and chosen again by our staff based on those qualifications. We have Ms. Liana Gallegos and we have Mr. Julio Montroy. Okay, so our start off, ladies first, of course. Can I have Liana? Check this out. Liana is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Robert and Monica Gallegos of San Juan. Liana is 14 years old and currently a freshman at PHA High School. She is a multi-sport athlete and excels in the classroom as well. To prove this, she's also a member of the PHA National Honor Society. She has participated in our San Juan Parks and Recreation programs for many years and attended Austin Middle School during her eighth grade. Her hobbies include track and field, fast pitch softball, crocheting. And what was very interesting to me after speaking to her mom earlier, she loved to sing. Okay, she is, again, she's a freshman at PHA High School, and she will be a member, or is currently a member, of the PHA RC choir. So proud of her as well. You know, an interesting side note that I'd like to mention here as well, after speaking to her mother, just to let her know, and you guys know, and Mr. Juárez may like to hear this as well, but her mother has volunteered, or I guess maybe voluntold, that anytime we need anybody to help us in our events in regards to singing, to National Anthem and accounts, that she's more than welcome.
Great.
Liana, not sure if she volunteered or voluntold, but she...
We should, we should already start off and maybe look into doing the Noche de Paz, the opening. I think she would be great, and I really appreciate that. I really do. Yeah, yeah. Maybe a little scholarship fund, I don't know.
Her hobbies include, as mentioned earlier, track and field. I'm sorry. Now, Ms. Liana had an outstanding summer. This is one of the reasons why she's, the main reason why she's chosen as our Female Athlete of the Year. She had an outstanding summer. She helped her San Juan Pony 14-year softball team finish in the first place for this summer. She competed in our San Juan Parks and Recreation Track, Summer Track Program, where she excelled in the distance and the shot put. In the regionals, which was held here in McAllen, she captured the Region Two Discus Championship, finishing first place, and took home the bronze medal in the shot put, finishing in third place at the regional. At the Games of Texas that were held here in Bronzville, she finished seventh in the state in the shot put. You know, so again, that leaves her top seven finishes in the whole entire state, which is held here in Bronze, so very proud of her doing that. That's a great accomplishment. You know, like any athlete, it's not easy. And we're a testament to seeing her put in the hard work and the hours to not only start with the discus and the shot put, but also finishing very strong. At the beginning, she was probably in the middle area in regards to finishing, but at the end, the hard work and dedication and the help of her, her city of San Juan coach, which was Kela Hernandez, again, she finished very strong at the regional meet and finished seventh in the state. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our San Juan Parks and Recreation TAF Female Athlete of the Year, Ms. Liana Gallegos. Okay, so if you could hold on a second. Next, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up our next recipient, which is Mr. Julio Montroy. Julio? Julio is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Julio and Sandra Montroy of San Juan, which is standing here, or sitting here. Before I move on, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. and Mrs. Montroy. And when I say that, it's just thank you and gratitude for them being volunteer coaches for our programs. You know, they commit yearly to multiple sports, help their, not only their kids, but all the kids in the community of San Juan. So I'd like to thank them for their dedicated service to us as well. Now, going back to the manay out here, Julio, he's 11 years old and currently a sixth grader at Austin Middle School. He attended Sorensen Elementary, of course, it's pre-k and kindergarten, sure. And, and one interesting thing to know about him, that he is a twin. So with him here today, I just met her, is his sister Mia, so they're twins. You know, Julio is also a multi-sport athlete and excelled in the classroom as well. Julio was chosen as a tap, as a top academic achiever at Sorensen Elementary and was selected by PHA a few years back to be promoted on our local billboards. Are you familiar with that? They, throughout the tri-city, cities, they promote children like Julio on their billboard, on their billboards to, for academic achievements, or we're proud of him on that. He also has participated in our San Juan Parks and Recreation programs, you know, at a very early age, since kindergarten. And his hobbies include soccer, baseball, light football, and basketball. He also competes in a local travel soccer team that he does coach as well. Julio also, you know, one of the reasons why he's the urban of this award is his outstanding year he had. And again, we not only look at summer programs that we offer, but the entire year again, he's been enrolled in our programs since October. So we're about to get started again with our new fiscal year in regards to that. He was selected as a Pony Baseball Mustang, which is a 10-year All-Star. He helped his San Juan Parks and Recreation Soccer Team finish in first place. He also helped his San Juan Parks and Recreation Flag Football Team to a second-place finish as a wide receiver and led his San Juan Parks and Recreation Basketball Team to a silver, to a silver medal as a point guard. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce your 2024 San Juan Parks and Recreation TAF Local Male Athlete of the Year, Mr. Montroy.
Just thank you to my parents.
So, Commission, thank you very much again for allowing us and our athletes in here to be here today. Again, we thank you all for allowing our programs to excel and our numbers are doing very well. And without the support of you guys up there, it couldn't be done. So again, thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of comments in reference to what Julio mentioned about parents. I really want to thank all the parents who are involved with their kids when it comes to youth sports. I know it's very tough. We were all there. We're still there. Some of ours have already gone and made their own lives, you know, but they started like your kids here. And a lot of us started the same way too. So my hats off to parents and all your families for supporting them. Not only that, but all the parents, you know, who are out supporting youth sports. You know, it's very important that we always, you know, be involved in their everyday lives because you guys know that when it comes to sports, it just shows, it teaches them discipline. And it teaches them to be good people and, and good members of society. And, and that's why we're here today. And once again, I want to thank you guys for, for doing great work and, and really putting San Juan on the map. And I know your, your, your future is so bright. I can see it. You know, you guys are full of energy, just like us, but I'm joking. But, yeah, no, no, no. But, but you guys, thank you so much. Once again, let's give them a big round of applause for their work. You want to take a picture? You can come up here and check. Let's get, let's get one with Ruben, Alex.
Okay.
Good job. Good job. Yes, sir.
Congratulations, ma'am. Good to meet you. Yes, ma'am.
Good job.
Una Mayor, on the presentation side on B, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 27, 2024, as Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan Far, San Juan Far Day. It's going to be this kind of...
Greetings, Mayor Garza, City Commission and City Staff.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to commend you for the excellent job you and your staff are doing for the wonderful city of San Juan. Everywhere I look, I see progress and vitality, and I just love those new restaurants you have, because we don't have to go everywhere, anywhere else. And I'm very proud of our tri-city area. Secondly, I'd like to introduce my organization. First, my name is Maria de los Angeles García, and Hela for short, that's my nickname. And I want to introduce my organization, Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan and Far, of which I am presently table director. And these are some of my officers. Can you stand up? Some of my officers. We are part of 17 tables in Texas and the International Alliance of Countries in the Western Hemisphere. Our founder Florence Griswold, who lived in central Texas, saw the need for women to foster goodwill, peace, and understanding with women of our neighboring countries. Our motto is "One for All and All for One." Our part, which is short for Pan American Round Table, consists of women from public education in other, other places. And we believe in our ideals. Yearly, our ASJP, I have to get used to saying ASJP, not PSJA, but you're all as good. And we donate two $1,000 scholarships to deserving students at the PHA ISD. And we have a humanitarian project every year, and some of us also work as volunteers. In 1949, our part came into existence, and in September 26, we will celebrate our 75th anniversary. Would be so grateful if you could honor our organization by making September the 27th Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan and Far. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we have an insert here. In June the 19th of this year, we were in the advance. There's a picture of our, some of our officers, and, and it explains more about our organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to read the proclamation. Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan Far. Whereas, the original founder of the Pan American Round Table was Ms. Florence Terry Griswold, who grew up on the border between United States and Mexico, becoming bilingual and aware of the need for better understanding among the peoples of the Americas. She opened her home to the women and children refugees during Mexico's turbulent political period in 1910 to 1916. While she lived in San Antonio, Texas, she organized the Pan American Round Table in 1916. And whereas, the Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan was organized in 1949 under the sponsorship of the McAllen Table. Far was officially added to the table's name in years later. And whereas, the first organized meeting of the Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan Far was held on September 27, 1949, at the San Juan Methodist Church with Mrs. J.S. Rowe of Alamo serving as the director. The new table received its first set of flags of the Pan American countries as a gift of the McAllen Table and the gavel from Reynosa Table. And whereas, on March 21, 1958, the Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan, Alamo first began to promote knowledge and provide scholarships to graduating seniors from the Far San Juan Alamo Independent School District. All scholarship monies are raised through pledges and other contributions during the year by the members. And whereas, exchanges of hospitality and cooperation of the Valley Tables have fostered a spirit of unity and friendship, hosting state conventions since 1969, and continue to host the Pan American Observations, Observance Day luncheons every year with attendance of members from the Texas Tables and Western Hemisphere. And whereas, the constant aim of the Pan American Round Table is to promote friendship and understanding through the official, social, and personal contact with other tables throughout the countries of the Western Hemisphere while always attempting to fulfill our motto, "One for All, All for One." "Una para todas, todas para una." Now therefore, be it resolved that our Mayor Mario Garza, the power vested in him as mayor, City of San Juan, along with Mayor Portem Marco Marquiviegas, Commissioner Ernesto Neto Juárez, Commissioner Adina Dina Satia, and Commissioner Jesús Jesse Lamírez hereby issue this 10th day of September 2024, proclaim 20 September 27, 2024, as Pan American Round Table of Alamo San Juan Far Day.
You want to call them? Here. There's your proclamation. Right now, we'll take a picture with your officers. You want to go ahead and stare at them here in the front? Tables. Tables, there.
Square babies.
Yeah, yeah. Right there. There you go.
Three cities.
Ah, it's great.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Facebook. All right. Congratulations.
Mayor Commissioners, moving on, we have a presentation on departmental reports. Tonight, we have the Department of Planning and Zoning, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Sanitation, and San Juan Memorial Library. The reading directors here, accessible if you have any questions for the Mayor Commissioners.
Any questions at this time for the directors?
Mayor, my thanks.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, correct.
What's the status on that one, ma'am?
They are already finalized with a sidewalk along the west side of Stewart Road, and they are working on the east side. So we had a meeting last week, Mr. Israel Garza and I, with the PHA and also with the City of Far.
And you said, Sue Road? Is that correct?
Yes, Stewart.
Stewart. Oh, Stewart. Right.
It's on Stewart, yes.
Yes, on one of the east side. East side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Juárez, in reference to the Mayfield and Acarte Parks, are we gonna, maybe sometime in December or January, maybe shut down for a little bit to see if we can install that fancy that, that we had some monies allocated, remember?
Yes.
So I know right now, you, we got programs and stuff going on, right? But at one point, at some point, are we gonna go ahead and just kind of...
Yeah, definitely. We, we, we did go out and measure the areas we wanted to get replaced.
Okay.
We are gonna look back at that to re-measure, to get, you know, the, the right areas we need to get replaced as well. Then we'll go out for bids. We're hoping to get this done, at least get into December, and then hopefully open up for an award maybe in, in January sometime.
So, so for the whole month of January, you're gonna, you're gonna shut down?
Yeah, we're gonna shut down.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna get, yearly, we do give the fields a rest and to kind of, you know, recoup from all the wear and tear throughout the year.
Got it.
So definitely, we are gonna shut down. You know, the December month is pretty, pretty busy for us, so for sure, the month of December.
So how, another, I guess, question I also have is, how often do you guys fertilize your grass there? Do you know?
Well, we do it in the summer and the winter.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's twice a year.
And I say that because it looks great. I mean, you guys are doing, you're, you're guys are doing fantastic job.
You have done for many years a great job and continuing the good work, maintaining it, maintaining it. We've been blessed with some rains, which does help.
Yeah, great.
But, but yeah, that's one of our main priorities.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for directors?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
For Mr. Juárez.
Yes.
As far as your report, I know that several of you all got certified for CPR.
Yes.
Does do the staff members that are out on the fields as far, they're having gains, are they also CPR certified?
Yes, all our, all our part-timers are mandated by our hiring process through HR to get CPR certified. They go through an online training and to start working with us, and you're talking about part-timers and, and our full-time. Now, the, the information I provided in the report was the, the training that, the hands-on training that we received at the ELC this month, which is for directors and, and superwriters.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And another question, as far as the night out, how many backpacks were given out? Do you have a count?
Oh, offhand, no. It was a collaboration between us and the Police Department. I know we had donated 600. I know Police Department as well, another 500 to 600. So minimum 1,000, and we did have some leftover for, for next year.
Very good. It was a very nice event.
Thank you.
For all your work. Mr. Israel Garza, I know that we, we talked about this a couple of weeks back, as far as the light pole that was knocked down at Cheers. I know you mentioned that it was going through the insurance. Where are we at on that one? Because I know that she's kind of frustrated about this. If you can get that information for me, please, and thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Ruben Juárez. How are you doing the north part? The project over there, how are you doing over there?
Oh, we're moving along. Phase one is probably up 90% complete now. There's some issues in regards to drainage stuff that we continue to work on. Or phase two, which is the building, they're going pretty fast. We did get a little slowed down because of the weather, but the construction company is moving on pretty quick in regards to the building. So we foresee, hopefully, middle to late this coming year to get done.
That's good. That's good. I don't know, I think it's, one, you do the, in that street, that Sue Road, you know how it's, they still have a detour around that area? Is any time, time limit to fix it or through the street or anything, you know?
No, I don't know what to do.
The time limit could be?
I'll follow up with the contractor tomorrow, and I'll, we'll get back to you.
And, and the reason it's, it's, you know, in the detour, there are a lot of the people that live there, they complain because they go too fast for their, I mean, that's the only thing. You know, if you can give me a safe date, more or less, I can... only thing, you know, if you can give me a same day, more or less, I can speak to them.
Is it because of the water that we talked about last week? Yeah, so I wanna say maybe if everything goes well, I wanna say within the next couple of weeks, then you just have a lot of water that is coming out because of the table, a little water table that is there. But I know the engineers are out there working on it, and it'll probably take a couple of weeks.
Okay.
To do that.
Thanks.
Mr. Garza, do we have a status report over here on South Standard on the project there?
Over here on South Standard?
Yes. Do we have a percentage completion, anything?
Is there more or less an estimated time? I know it's been a long time, more or less, we're already finally?
I guess the question is, how far behind are we? Are we behind, are we delayed with the, not us, obviously, but is there a delay with the project, and if so, how far, more or less?
Right now, on the water, we're about eighty-five percent, and the sewer, we're eighty-three percent. They're supposed to start with the road reconstruction sometime next week.
Okay.
And that's pretty much gonna be the completion of the project.
So we're looking at a timeframe possibly less than a month, two months? I just know what's been going on for a long, I know we've hit, hit some issues along the way. They're moving on.
Big difference?
They're actually moving better than over time.
So in two weeks, when we have a next city meeting, y'all can give us a better report, a more accurate report on the project, if it's still going, just so we can let the citizens know as well. That'll be good, thank you.
Mr. Garza, also, the company that you hired for that Rowe Road on Standard, they did a tremendous job. It was a good, I mean, I know I had a lot of people complaining that they never fixed it, and now it was blocked, now they were complaining that, when are you all gonna open it? So I've been getting some calls that, while they were company, they did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, okay, no, no, they did a good job. Good day.
Thanks. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on.
Yes, sir, Mayor Commissioners, on the public hearings, I'm gonna switch the AMV Mayor.
Yeah.
Because of the ordinance and the sales tax, but we have consideration appropriate action and an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of San Juan Texas combination tax limited place driving certificates of obligation, series twenty twenty four, providing for the payment of said certificates by the levy of and valorum, at valorum tax upon all taxable property within the city and resolving other matters incident related to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of said certificates. We have Mr. Bobby Ariad here with, with us here today to give us a presentation on the, on the monies.
Thank you, Mayor Council, appreciate being here, Bobby Ariad, for the record, the Australian Financial Wizard. If you look at the documents before you there, if you go to page one, if you notice back in July nineteen, there's a couple of columns there. So when we approached you, July nineteen, we were looking at probably about a four-point four-one percent interest rate at the time. So as we work with staff, with Ben, Leroy, and I wanna thank them tremendously, we've done this a couple times with them in the past, and they always come through, they're very diligent, this is a big process. You had to provide a POS official statement that the investors in New York and Wall Street, they wanna know about San Juan, what San Juan's made of, what the future looks like, are you strong, are you growing, are you budgeting correctly, is management stable and making good decisions? So last year, y'all went up a notch, you went up A plus, and again, this year, they reaffirmed it, they kept doing A plus again. Credit to you guys for continuing to be good stewards for the city. So having said that, as we went to market, this morning, Leroy and Ben's office, we had, we were watching the market as they were putting the orders in between nine o'clock this morning and ten thirty, we had a couple of documents about how we did it. Don't worry, I bought them, so. But as we're looking at it, pretty much all the maturities, each, each, each year is a percentage, you might see one rate, one settle on it, it's gonna be three twenty-six, but each and every year, your one is a certain rate, your two is a certain rate, your twenty is a certain rate, rate. So as you, as we looked at it, you had about fourteen million dollars of bonds that were out there to be sold, and we had about twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine million dollars of interest from Wall Street saying they wanted to invest in you guys. So when that happens, we go back to them and say, hey, you know, we were talking in three-point-eight-nine, we need you to knock it down a few, a few points, so we settled at three-point-eight-six, and that's where you're at today. So essentially, about a million-two and change, better than what we thought back in, in, in July. And then we'll just move forward to page two, this is the government of the city. I'll kinda point out to the top right corner, your A-plus rating from S and P Rating Agency. And then if you notice, the tax rate from twenty twenty was just under seventy pennies back then, sixty-nine ninety-three to twenty-four, and then now for this year, you'll be at sixty-seven sixty-five, so you've gone down, I guess it was, was it two and a quarter, two and a third pennies in the last four or five years? And if you notice, there's a bar graph of your debt, so we have it sloping down, so and you'll, you'll continue to, as you grow, have more capacity to do things that you need to fix in the city. I'll go on to the next page, page three, this is the fourteen and a half that'll be in your coffers within the next thirty days when it closes. And these were the projects that y'all identified, the Freightliner, the Pumper, the building, finish up for the fire department, I believe, for the fire building, a street rehab, and then a public safety support building. Those are the dollar figures, and again, I think we discussed it last time, if for whatever reason, one of those comes in with the budget, money can go towards some other projects. And one thing to know, it does take time to build a building and fix a building, so it could be that it's fourteen and a half, but over time, Leroy has, you might be getting four or five percent. So you gotta build this, you gotta expend these funds probably in the next three years, probably just to be on the safe side of IRS. But any interest that's accrued inside that construction account, those dollars can go back to, to, you know, any cost overruns, or, you know, whatever that street project is, if you needed another half block or something, it can go towards that, just to note that. And then again, going to, to page four, again, this is the debt service, the pro forma, three-point-eight-six percent. If you notice on the far right point, far right column, the second from the right, the required INS twenty-one fifty-seven, which is the tax rate of the INS rate for today, that you're gonna adopt, and then you notice, as you go further down the years out, it'll continue to drop over time. And again, trying to manage your tax rate as you grow, continue to invest in the community and keep preparing for the things you need to do. And again, just wanna thank y'all, I don't know if you have any question.
You mentioned, as far as going back to the four and a half, where we can use some of those fundings for something else, is that something that you come and you guide us on that, just to make sure that we?
Yeah, we would talk to Ben, Arnold gonna do your bond attorney, if something came in on the budget, we have extra funds, what can we use it for? He's the one that we blessed.
And the reason why I ask that, because that's the last thing, you know, we wanna get into any type of legal, if we did something wrong, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and you, there's a, in the bond document, there's a, the covenant is to say, these are the things you can use it for, and he structured in ways, it's sort of broad, but you just always gotta go, we always, Ben calls me, Leroy calls me, Arnold's the one that's gonna have the best.
Right, yeah, I got you.
Because he's the one that signs his thing, and the Attorney General signs off on, it's sort of like an engineer.
Sure, sure. Okay, no problem, okay. Any questions?
I just have a question, Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is that the, the one over by Stewart? Stewart in business? Yeah. That's the one that you recall, maybe you wanna hear, that we did it alone. So some of those monies were done by, by the city, so this is more like a reimbursing back to the city. And it stipulated a street, and then the subdivision, so that if there's any monies left over, we can tackle another street.
So the subdivision was already paid?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion approved?
We'll move.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby, appreciate it. The next item, Mayor Commissioners, we have a public hearing on adopting the proposed tax rate and levy for the City of San Juan Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty-five. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Good evening, sir.
On Tuesday, August thirteenth twenty twenty-four, the City Commission voted for approval of proposed tax rate of point six-seven-six-five for the fiscal year October first twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth twenty twenty-five, and scheduled one regular required public hearing on September tenth twenty twenty-four. However, in accordance with the property tax law, if the proposed tax rate of point six-seven-six-five exceeds the adjusted for unused point six-eight-three-seven, therefore, a public hearing on the proposed rate will be required before the City Commission adopts the tax rate ordinance. Staff recommends approval of tax rate of the point six-six-seven-six-five.
Okay, that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at six forty-four PM, six forty-four PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions, members of the commission?
Just to reiterate, this is not gonna increase the taxes here in San Juan, it's to stay the same. We are not increasing it so the people can.
That is exactly right.
Thank you.
Mr. Leroy, we're not increasing, we are increasing the taxes, because we're leaving the tax rate as this, so we're generating taxes. The recommended tax rate for no new taxes would be the point sixty-three?
That's correct, but we're not.
Just for clarification.
So, so just keep this in mind, the city is not increasing taxes, is the?
The tax rate.
Right, tax rate, is the county the one that is, you know, hiring those property taxes?
Correct. But the tax rate is?
It'll stay the same.
Right, staying the same. But it's generating the taxes, that's why it's considered a tax increase.
Right.
When the people see it, in the newspaper that says tax increase, means that we're generating more taxes because the tax rate is staying the same.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'll close this at six forty-five PM. Is there a motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next item, we have under appointments, we have a consider removal appointment or reappointment of board member, members related to the planning and zoning commission.
This is Calatia. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Fana, Mr. Carlos, this moment, the San Juan Planning Commission consists of seven members. Due to their, the City Commission would need to appoint seven members, which four members will serve a two-year term, ending on even year, and even year, while three members will serve one year, ending on an odd year. So at this moment, the following members who are current to the, to the board, apply and express interest in continuing serving in the city. Ms. Valerie Cárdenas, Elisa Izaguirre, Irma Castillo, Luis Montcillas Junior, Cesar Cantú, Mark Salinas, and our office received one application for Mr. Eric Sanchez.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Valerie Cárdenas, Elisa Izaguirre, Irma Castillo, Luis Montcillas Junior, Cesar Cantú, Mark Salinas, remove Adán Magallón, and appoint Eric Sanchez.
Second the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, we have consider removal appointment or reappointment of the board member, members related to the Civil Service Commission.
The table's permission consists of three members, serving a term of three years, due to the terms of Mr. Juan De Vásquez, who was reappointed to serve a two-year term, and Mr. Eva Alvarado, who was reappointed to serve a one-year term. At this moment, the City Commission would need to appoint two new members to replace Mr. Vásquez and Mr. Alvarado. Just to clarify, Mr. Eric Sanchez asked to complete or refill his term for the Civil Service, I know he was appointed to the.
Denise, come up to the board.
And to clarify, I know she said permission, but this is to the Civil Service Commission? So under the Tax and Local Government Code one forty-three point zero zero six, it's the presiding officer that makes that appointment, so it would be coming from the mayor. Judge Germaine, all appointments.
You know what, I'm gonna go ahead and table this item, this particular item, okay? So that when we come back, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and look into it more deeply, and I'll reappoint, I'll appoint, okay? Just for this, we'll bring it back on the next page.
Okay, item C, consider removal appointment or reappointment of board member, members related to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Calatia?
Thank you, Mr. Fana. The San Juan Parks and Recreation Advisory Board consists of seven members. Due to the expiry terms of the members, the City Commission would need to appoint seven new members, which four members will serve a two-year term, ending on an even year, while three members will serve one year, ending on an odd year. Just because regarding, back in, when we were in COVID, after COVID, I know Mr. Juarez, during that time, there were not many persons, so I mean, I know there was a, the absolute point of members again to the board. But at this moment, the following members are expressing interest to continue to serve the board, which is Miguel Alvarado, Rodrigo de la Cerca, Aaron González, Camilo Herrera, Erica Hópiz, Michael Juarez, and our office received two applications, one from Sabrina Rodríguez Fuentes and Janobebo Quintanilla.
Yes, sir.
Of responding to appoint seven new members.
So we have one resignation, right?
Yes.
Jonathan Gombera?
Well, it's not a recipe, because it says, um, had acquired.
Okay, but he's not, he's not. He doesn't wanna be reappointed?
No, he doesn't.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to remove Michael Juarez and appoint Sabrina Rodríguez, and to fill in that extra with Mr. Gombera, and fill in with Mr. Jim Quintanilla, the two applicants, sir.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, consider removal appointment, reappointment of board member, members related to the police act of the league. Ms. Calatia?
Good afternoon, once again, the San Juan Police, athletically consists of five members. Due to the expiry terms of the members of the, of the members of the City Commission, we need to appoint five new members, reappoint or appoint five new members, which two members will serve a three-year term, two members would serve a two-year term, and one member would serve a one-year term. At this moment, the following members are interested in continuing serving the San Juan power. Mr. Gilbert Garza, Cardi Villeras, Pablo Trevino, Elie Guillera, and Bravo Martínez.
I'll make a motion to reappoint all members to the board.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Under discussion of possible action, we have consideration action on a petition to remove a ten-point-oh-seven acre tract of land out of the west half of Lot Seven, Block Forty-Seven, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision from the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. ETJ from the City of San Juan is requested by Quintanilla Health and Associates Incorporated. Ms. Gomez?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening, ma'am.
An application that we received from Mr. Alonso Quintanilla is to remove a ten-acre tract of land from a. To remove the ten acre tract to the, uh, San Juan ETJ, the property located, uh, a half a mile on, uh, Minnesota Road, along the north side of Minnesota Road. And we have Mr. Alfonso Quintanilla here. I don't know if we decided if we, I can change my recommendation. And, uh, after checking with legal, if the request comply with the requirements listed on the TML ETJ release by the petition, the city cannot reject the petition after the forty-four, forty-five days. I gave some information to Mr. Brenda Scalante, I think you got a copy of that application from ETJ.
Was the city ever notified through some sort of letter or anything in reference to this?
Yes, my understanding, Mayor Commissioners, yes, we were notified. It's just unfortunate that the person that was here before with us, because he never notified Ms. Gomez, and he left about maybe over, over a month and a half, maybe two months. So, we never sent a letter so that we could reach out to the landowners and, and talk and dialogue with them, maybe negotiate as to the reasons why they wanted to get out of the ETJ. So, as per state law, uh, we have no option but to release it, to, to, out of the ETJ. Now, I like to, uh, and I don't know whether we still can or not, but maybe dialogue with them and see, maybe we can keep you here, what, what can we do so that we don't lose them out of our ETJ from, from the city?
And have you spoken with anybody?
No, as a matter of fact, I have not.
So then, why don't we just, at this po, at this time, it's just table this item and maybe...
So, so we can, we can table it?
You can table it, Mayor. The problem is that because of the time span that...
The forty-five days?
It still makes it as a matter of law. But even, even if the forty-five days hadn't passed and they met the petition requirements under the statute, and there's no, there's nothing that disqualifies them from their petition, uh, it's almost kind of automatic. There, the only way you can deny their petition is if they didn't fulfill the requirements of the petition. And from what I understand, we gave this checklist to Ms. Gomez, and she verified the petition, and the petition, uh, is meet all the requirements under, under the statute. So, whether or not, uh, whether or not the forty-five days are passed or not, the fact that they met the requirement of the petition, we still wouldn't have any other grounds to deny this petition anyhow. Uh, so, um, what other cities and what they've done in the past is, uh, sometimes, uh, it gives that city maybe forty-five days to speak to the landlord. The landlord could withdraw their petition if they wanted to, if they were able to kind of make, uh, kind of meet to see what, why are the issues, what are the issues that are arising as to why they want to withdraw or exempt themselves from the ETJ? Those are, that's what kind of like with those forty-five days are kind of for. But at this time, as a matter of law, it's pretty much, they're exempt. But they would have been exempt anyway because they met the requirements under the statute also from, from, speaking of Ms. Gomez, after we gave her the, uh, the checklist.
Okay. So, how do we fix this? So, this doesn't fall through the cracks? You know? I mean, it's, it's kind of, to me, I think this is ridiculous. I mean, there needs to be some sort of barriers of, of how the communication, the process goes through several hands. You know what I'm saying? Because this is, and this is a ten acre tract. You know, can you imagine how much, uh, revenue we can generate? The city? And then for something like this to fall through the cracks shouldn't be happening? Mr. Alpona? And then, and, uh, I, whoever's, and there's no, I'm not blaming anybody here, but all I'm saying is that this, this shouldn't happen. And I hope it doesn't happen again. You know? We need to, we need to make sure we're on top of this.
As, as they come in, uh, we've advised other cities that we need to put a calendar deadline system and, and then have the CM or planning to reach out to figure out what could be done. But pretty much, again, the only other option, if they meet all the statute, the only other really option there would be if the landlord would withdraw their petition because they're able to work some of the, some of the issues that maybe are going on between the city and the landlord or the developer. And so, that's the time to do that, um, but...
Yeah, but that's, that beats, you know, it fits the purpose, yeah, exactly. The forty-five days, I mean, we shouldn't even be, I mean, it, it's passed and that's it.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I guess, all right. You have any questions, sir? What's this gentleman, you have anything to say?
I can, I can just take my name.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. I'm Alfonso Quintanilla, I'm the engineer, Quintanilla Health and Associates from Edinburgh. And I represent engineering wise, Mr. Richard Garza, the owner of Gark, the property owner. I, I sympathize with your frustration, uh, we, um, understand it's been changes.
It, it's not your fault.
But, uh, you know, it might be, as it may, you know, we're here, and we need to, my client needs to see what he wants to do, uh, in the near future on this property.
Okay.
But thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Any questions? So, I don't know if you're gonna, if you and we're trying to speak to them or...
We can, most definitely, I mean, we, you guys can approve it. And then, uh, what I can just say, can reach out to the developer, Mr. Cantú, and maybe come with some sort of an agreement that, uh, we can waive, maybe some fees, bring it back to you guys, and, uh, put him back in the ETJ.
Okay. All right, I'll just, is there a motion approved? On this item? Yes, sir? No? So, there's no motion?
It dies.
There is an emotion, uh, again, as a, the statute has already set it up as a matter of law. If, whether the city takes action either before the forty-five days, they don't do, take any action within the forty-five days, then pretty much as a matter of law, it's basically approved.
Okay, so then, we don't even have to take a vote?
No.
All right. Next?
Yes, uh, item B, consider authorization City Mayor to approve and sign a letter of intent with sentence Martin Emergency Group, a state contract vendor under the Buy Board program for a 2027 Pearson Force of 107 Ascendant Single Exo letter for the amount of 1.6 million, 1,662,972. Mr. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is just a letter of intent to start the, uh, production of 107 foot area to replace our current, uh, 78 foot. We're gonna go with, add an additional 29 feet, so we'll go with a 107. This is just a letter of intent, nothing is, is other than just to start the production at today's price. This is certified, uh, buy board vendor, she's now that.
So, and, and, and one of the reasons that Chief and I spoke about was that the lead time on building something like this takes about anywhere between forty-eight, maybe more months than that. So, we start the process now, maybe in two years, we can come back to the board and say, this is where we, where we are, this is what we need, it's in process, it's almost ready, and purchase it either through the general fund or through CEOs.
We did approve, we did, uh, review the letter of intent. There is safety valves in place. Also, there is a non-approaching, appropriation clause is on there and everything, so there is really not a contractual obligation other than a letter of intent setting the price because of the lag time. So, we're protected, uh, and the chief can pull the plug on this thing if he has to at a later time.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item under, what do we have? Discussion and consideration toward RFP number 24-012-09-05, City's Water Treatment Plan, additional garage to the lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the City Mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Calatia?
Good evening, Mayor Members of the Commission. On Wednesday, August 21st and August 28th, 2024, staff solicited for proposal from the Advanced News Journal for RFP number 24-012-09-05, City's Water Treatment Plan, additional garage. On August 26th, 2024, three bid conferences held with a bid opening on September 5th, 2024. A total of three proposals were received from the following contractors: REB Merit, Riverline Contacting, Go Underground LLC, Trinac Consultants. Recommends RE Barrett, the awarded set project, and deemed the lowest bidder in the amount of $97,788 and $1,950 for the alternative. Jose Bedes and Trinac Consultants, present. If you have any questions, allow Mr. Alpona to listen.
Any questions?
Mayor, just real quick clarification purposes, under page 121, RE Barrett is quoting a thousand versus 25,000. Is there a disparity? Is that the right, is that a typo?
What was your question?
It's a, it's a, an item number five, page 121. Thousand? Yeah. I mean, the difference is way too far.
Where's the 25,000?
Yes.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Commissioners. Jose Bedes and Trinac Consultants. Yes, uh, we did review every, uh, of the business mills. We did notice, uh, some of the prices were very high. But as for that, uh, we came to conclusion to that a thousand dollars was pretty much... Yes, uh, because it's just a small tractway that's already put on the, on the additional garage.
Right, okay.
Have you worked with it before?
Uh, no, we haven't.
This is the first time that you've worked with them?
We did find out that this is what they do usually, they do houses, uh, they also have a project in Elsa.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, as from our experience, we have...
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sort of, yeah. I mean, it's still gonna be under the other one, but I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by Trinac.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, under contracts, we have considered authorizing the City Mayor to renew a contract between the City of San Juan and AAM GIS Solutions for the Geographic Information Systems, uh, GIS services. Ms. Gomez, this is a renewal contract that, that, uh, is currently in place. This is for the GIS system, this is for, for us, the city, to get assistance from the experts. Uh, Mr. Sergio Castro is here with us, and his wife, uh, they're very, very good as far as doing this. They have a lot of years of experience doing the GIS systems. Uh, so, so the city is very, fairly new in doing this as far as the GIS, we need, we need some guidance. As a matter of fact, uh, we're actually training the whole, the whole city staff, uh, directors. But this is not only for GIS, uh, the, the, the item goes, I mean, it can go with very detailed complexes, how, how we want to do it, whether it's streetlights, uh, stop signs, sewer lines, water lines, pretty much all of that that is into the city. So, I don't know, Ms. Gomez, would like to say a few more things on that.
Yes. This is that first, I really wonder agreement that Mr. Alpona mentioned, uh, we acquired this system in January of this year, and we have, uh, the service cost divided into four departments, uh, planning, utilities, public works, sanitation. And basically, the agreement, uh, is the same. Uh, we send it for review for legal and everything is fine. And staff are recommending approval of the GIS agreement.
Any questions? Is there anything you guys want to add? Sir? Yes, sir? Sure can, just state your name for the record, please.
Sergio Castro, owner of MGI Solutions.
Ime Castro, owner of AM and GIS Solutions.
Who's owner?
We are.
Usually she.
For most gratitude, thank you for the city for giving us the opportunity and bringing the assistance to the city.
Sure.
Uh, and just wanted to reassure all the council, just in a couple of examples that you saw today. The ETJ, ETJ release area, we have helped other cities with that. The statute is very clear. You meet the seventy-two hours, you don't respond back, it's done. It's a done deal. So, we're thinking through GIS solutions, where we're gonna have an automated system, where they're gonna have to populate everything digitally. If it meets all the checkmarks that the statute calls for, now let me see, Ms. Gomez know, or the planning department, hey, somebody is wanting to fulfill the, the needs of ETJ release, and they're doing it. Now, keep, send out email notifications, council members want to get, um, hey, reach out to the developer, talk to the engineer record, why, why are they trying to get out? By practical, I'm an engineer, a civil engineer. By, by life, I've been, uh, public safety in 911, GIS for over twenty years. So, I've seen a lot of things that you can use GIS for, and that was one of the examples with this new role. The other one, several of you throughout the night were asking about projects, capital improvement projects. We can create dashboards with GIS data, which your director will fit in the information. What is the progress of the project? What is the percentage that it has been completed? Upload imagery, where the status is. So, all of that can be done with GIS technology. So, we just thank you, uh, for considering and looking at approving this renewal, and hopefully you give us the opportunity to bring the city to that statute. And lastly, I have a very special place in, in my heart for San Juan because I live here, and I want our city to be on top of the wine in this.
Thank you, sir. Going back on that real quick. That would have happened, I mean, had we had, had we had, sorry, microphone. It would have happened, something like that, we would have gotten notifications and had been on track of it, something.
Yes, sir, the, the technology is so advanced nowadays, um, data is everything nowadays. Even going out for new grants, a lot of our federal agencies, state agencies, if you don't have something already shell-ready, like you did a study, you did a schematic design, uh, like that, all your downtown munification project that you're doing, that Arrow Health with Madison do that, that visual concept, that goes a long ways when we apply for grants. So, all of that easily, if we don't have the in-house, you know, engineer, they can do it, AutoCAD design, very specific detail, schematically designed, GIS can subsidize for a lot of that.
So, how often do you, you have to upgrade your software?
That here's the beauty about it. Now, it is more like everything else in the world, it's a web service management. It, it renews automatically with S3. S3 is the main manufacturer, we're not the software owner, we don't do anything, we just use the software.
Got it.
So, you pay an annual subscription fee for that. A new release comes up, you get the upgrades.
Got it.
Uh, and as a matter of fact, uh, we, we assisted in getting the license. You already have the license, and you get all of these bells and whistles already. This covered review, I will, I will recommend the city to downgrade the license because there was a change done on June of this year, where with the lower license, you will be able to do exactly the same thing at a lower cost. Uh, we're talking about a difference of about $2,000 that you're gonna be saving on the license alone. Those are the type of expertise that we bring aboard. It's not only about doing the GIS data, updating the data, but it's also keeping on top of law regulation changes, being your liaison with other agencies. We've been assisting Ms. Monica with 911. They're a little bit behind in updating data. We currently, right now, the data that we're working for use your address point layer, and we noticed that a lot of the addresses are not on the GIS layer. What happens? That impacts emergency responders. Somebody calls 911, it doesn't plot it automatically in the 911 system, and then our telecommunicators have to be asking, hey, where are you? What is the nearest intersection? What, how can we find you? Versus, if it wasn't the system, if it was there, it would pinpoint into that address point that we put on top of the structure. So, it matters a lot how much time you invest in the data, how much effort you put on the data, and the accuracy of the data. The City of San Juan has a lot of data. I mean, it's been almost two decades that I've been trying to convince the city to migrate over. First, they have microstation, they migrated to AutoCAD. We have access to those files, uh, thanks to Ms. Gomez, and we're transposing them from AutoCAD layers to GIS format, so it can be shareable across many platforms.
Great. Good job.
And the other beauty about it now that it is web-based, I make a change right now, you told me to, you know, add this brand new subdivision. As I make the change, it synchronizes across all the platform.
How many cities do you have?
So far, we're doing work with Alton. We're working currently, uh, trying to get something done with Westlaco as well.
Okay.
Uh, San Juan has been another one.
Sure.
On my day-to-day, as you can see, this is my, my after, after-hours. I am the GIS manager for City of Edinburgh. If you go to the City of Edinburgh website, at the very bottom, you click on the GIS map. That's something to look forward to. But it, it has to start somewhere. It has to start somewhere. Uh, and another note, I do have staff, there are eighty-five. They'll be on there and I'm kind of like, putting together, running with it, and then, we, and the other goal we try, wanna try to get is what Mr. Alpona mentioned. We want to train staff. We want to train in-house staff. Another one would be like, uh, we're gonna be hosting a training on the 20th for construction inspections. We have all this development going on. Hosts checking, make sure that the compaction testing is being done on the streets, all the pressure testing on our sewer lines, make sure they're working the back teeth, make sure that we're collecting the concrete cylinders needed, when we're dumping sidewalks, foundations for our buildings, our proof rolls being done. That's my civil engineering talking now. By practical, I'm civil engineer.
Yes.
But by academia, I'm electrical engineer as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Well, can't even say it all. Is there a motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, we have consideration and, uh, to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of San Juan and the City of Westlaco for animal control operations and empowerment services and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. and empowerment services, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, chief?
Good evening, sir.
Uh, let's renew the, the interlocal agreement between us and the City of Westlaco for animal.
Standard.
Uh, they, they changed the contract, they, uh, they're not gonna be open in the week is anymore, and, uh, they're not an office citizen to take, uh, animals anymore, therefore we have to pay every time. But these are a hundred and fifty dollars per animal.
If we pick up the animal at the resident and animal control takes it?
Correct, uh, before, they were allowed citizens to take the animals, different sample, they, they had to, they had, they could take them and bill the charge for it to go on, the new contract, they removed that, so we have to, now we, when we take them, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per.
So when you're saying you take them, are they surrendering them, or you're buying them on the roads, both?
Well, it's, it's, yes, for surrender.
You take several at one time, at the one cost, or per?
Per. Five, six puppies, it's a hundred and fifty dollars each.
Each.
So we're incurring the cost of a resident wanting to voluntary surrender their animal?
Correct.
What charge are we looking at here, do you have numbers from last year?
For, uh, the charge per animal?
Yeah, oh, where they were charging this, right?
No.
More or less.
No, because the contract would allow us to tell the citizen that they have to take the animals, that we, that's, that's gonna take that cost. But now we don't have that.
By numbers?
Now we have to take it.
By numbers, more or less?
We paid a hundred and fifty-two thousand just to enter animal service.
Like I was saying, numbers-wise, you know, which one do you think you averaged?
I have maximum numbers here, I don't have all of them, for example, the month, the month of March, we took a hundred and fourteen animals.
So a hundred and fourteen, that we'd have to pay a hundred and fifty each.
And that was just one month?
Just one month, um.
And we incur the cost, we don't charge the resident when they're calling us to surrender and us take it, the City of San Juan incurs the cost.
Correct.
It's a lot of money.
So, so more or less, the total that we pay for animal services this year is, uh, a hundred and seventy-something dollars.
And they're now not gonna be open on weekends, and not gonna be open after hours, so.
They have that they were open the weekends, uh, from nine to.
We have to create an ordinance for it.
So.
We had some timeframe to, to take animals here, you know, we also trade dogs or, or citizens had to, wanted to take their dogs, their animals.
I know you had animal control on call for the weekends, if there was a dog bite, so now in this situation with this new contract, if that situation happens, we cannot. We don't have a charge. Have you compared prices with other?
We need an ordinance. So, so maybe we need to consider and, and maybe, uh, uh, passing an ordinance and, and charging the resident, the one fifty or whatever, you know, you're saying, because that is a lot of money, you know, and.
So, um, just to add to that, we do have the, the quarantines at two hundred and fifty dollars.
And those are for dog bites?
Correct, we do cite the owners, which, you know, they go, if they go and pay their certification, but I don't believe that the certification is for two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know, Mr. David, you want that number?
So right now would be the recommendation that, well, I mean, this has to be done regardless.
It has to be done, it doesn't say that we have to use them.
Okay.
It's to live throughout the year for other services.
So we approve this right now, and later we come back, the commission discussing what we need to do on our side to minimize that cost.
I think we need to act, we need to address this, there's plenty of ordinance that we talked about at the workshop that need to be addressed, but this is definitely one of them, because we can't be incurring such a large cost when we're trying to still balance our budget as it is for this coming fiscal year. So, yeah, my recommendation is definitely to keep looking and look at alternatives and come up with some type of plan of action, because if they're close on the weekends, we have the dog bite, we're still gonna have to do something in that situation.
Does the county have, uh, an animal?
Not very common.
No, are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, no, because they don't, they don't have city warrants or anything like that.
No, I'm saying like the shelter, the county, like, where, where do they, they take their, their animals to the?
The only ones that.
To Westlaco?
Uh, no, the only ones are Cabo, the one that picks up a livestock.
Oh.
They do charge to release the animal.
Got it, okay.
I don't think Westlaco charges for release.
Yeah.
The other, the other location was one of, uh, Trenton, McAllen, I forget the name of that place, On Valley? But we, they were with them because they were very expensive.
Too expensive.
Yeah.
So I guess just revisit it anyway, just to see what their prices are for comparisons.
And also come up with an idea and an ordinance.
And we do have to work on the ordinance, we can incur these costs when they're, I can understand how we find them on the side of the road, you know, that situation, unique situations, but just because a resident wants to voluntary surrender it, I mean.
We pay.
When we find an animal on the side of the road like that, we pay twenty-five dollars to it.
Well, that's.
But we're looking into something else at this point to see how we can actually eighty-five dollars for, for animal.
In the contract, did they specify cats?
No.
They're not accepting any cats at all?
So far, they're memo, they're not accepting cats, I don't have the contract in front of me, uh, but I, it doesn't talk about cats. It's what's actually, it says about animals, it doesn't specify, do you have a contract?
It's only per animal.
Per animal?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, animal.
It doesn't matter what.
Doesn't matter.
They have a memo, they can provide those, they're not accepting cats.
So it's just an interlocal agreement, so we're not paying a monthly flat rate on top of the additional charges?
Be with them, it's just, it's just an agreement.
So regardless, we gotta approve this, because that's the way.
Yeah, we, we could also.
We'll come back and decide as the commission what we need to do.
There is a thirty-day out clause too, so there's a no-call clause out of this.
Regardless, this is just accepting the fact that they're telling us it's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars each, right, basically, okay?
And no weekends and no after-hours.
Those are the things the citizens are not able to take them, and the weekends are not, um, they're not.
So it's imperative on our side to get moving as quick as can, because it, it's already in place.
Yes.
So we, on our side, the commission side, we, we need to get moving on that. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item on the consent agenda, tonight we have item A, B, A and B. Uh, if any of you, Mayor Commissioners, you have any questions, anyone, any of those two, you can always pull them off for any further discussion.
Uh, is there anything on your consent agenda we need to amend or modify? Amend or modify? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under executive session, Mayor Commissioners, we have the City, the San Juan City Commissioner can be in executive session according with the Texas Committee's Act, Verity Texas Station and Coast Annuitary Government Code, Chapter five oh one oh seven one, tonight we have pursuit section five oh one oh seven one, consultation with attorney, discussion and facilitation regarding legal issues concerning energy for twenty twenty-four, no to the pass.
Is there a motion to enter executive?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be entering at seven twenty P M. We're back, uh, from executive session at seven thirty-eight P M. Is there a motion to?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, under executive session, A, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion that's discussed in the executive session.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting has been adjourned at seven thirty-eight P M, thank you.